I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Reinbeck Planning Board to order. In terms of the hosted agenda, two items have just reversed their position in the public hearings. The Scholder and the Mattel public hearings have just switched positions. And other than that, the planning board does have a few ZBA referrals to deal with, both Mulligan and Mattel. And we have, well, we do also have two time extensions for Henry Stout and Grassmere at the end of the meeting. I would like to ask for a motion to approve Jim's meeting notes.
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Second, Sharon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. I hope you've all had a chance to read the September 21 minutes. And hoping so, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good. I have no correspondence or announcements to mention at this point. Does anyone else have anything you'd like to bring to the planning board's attention before we get started? Hearing nothing, we will go to our first public hearing. John Kish, 399 Ackert Hook Road, Site Plan Special Use Permit for a Ground Mounted Solar System.
Hi, this is here for Kish, and I work for Sun Common. We are proposing to install a small-scale residential ground-mounted solar array consisting of 52 350 watt solar panels, total of 18.2 kW DC, 15.2 kW AC. The proposed array will be screened by a mixture of Colorado blue spruce trees and forsythias. And I believe a site, a site visit was performed earlier this week, so I'll take any questions from here.
Okay. Edna and I did the site visit. Edna, if you'd like to go first.
Sure. This is on the east side of Ackert Hook Road. It's a property that's quite high. You can see the winding drive that goes up to it. There's not a lot of level land up there. The house is on an area that's level, and then the level area extends back to where the solar array is. Because of its location and because of all of the vegetation, nobody will be able to see this array except the occupants of the house from their patio. The only other comment I have is I was surprised that it was not staked. We had a little bit of a trouble at first trying to figure out exactly where it was. We expected it to be staked. Leah, why was it not staked?
I think that might be a question for our field engineers. You know, I don't go on the site for any reason. I just attend these meetings. So, yeah, maybe the guys did it and it got taken down, or, you know, I'm not sure.
Perhaps we could make a request, so since we see you fairly often, that the arrays always be staked?
I will definitely pass that along to them.
I have no other comments?
Thank you, Edna. I agree with what Edna has pointed out. I don't see any issues with this. The staking is very important. Obviously, we want to make sure we're looking at the right place. And just from the map, it's not always easily discerned, but in this case, I don't think it caused us any troubles. I think it's a perfectly adequate place to put this, and I don't see any issues with it. Any questions from other members of the planning board for the applicant representative? Hearing none, I'd like to open this up to the public. Are there any people from the public who'd like to comment on this application? No, and Jim?
I'll check. Nothing in the chat box, and I don't see anyone up on the screen here.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
So moved, Michael.
Second?
Second, Sharon.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Very good. I have a resolution. The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by John Kish for Site Plan Special Use Permit under Town Code Chapter 125 for installation of a ground-mounted solar array at 399 Ackert Hook Road in the RC5 Rural Countryside Zoning District. We reaffirm the proposed action as type 2 under seeker, based upon review of submitted information, including reports from planning board members and the CAB on their site visits to the project site, finds that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of Chapter 125. With respect to the application for special use permit to authorize work, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits set forth in Town Code Chapter 125. We grant the special, we grant the requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approval by the planning board. With respect to the application for site plan approval, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code Chapter 125, and approves the application inclusive of the application materials and plans by Sun Common dated June 22, 2020. And we authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited plan upon the applicant satisfaction of the below conditions or requirements within six calendar months of the application, of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified within Town Code Chapter 125, payment of any outstanding fees and/or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Reinbeck related to review and processing of applications subject to this resolution, and receipt of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein or from any other town, county, state, or other agency as required to undertake the proposed actions. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Michael.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion to move from Edna and a second from Sharon. Any discussion? Hearing none. I will poll the board. Edna?
Yes.
Melody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, as soon as I get the plans to stamp and sign, you will be able to get the building permit. Our next public hearing. Adam Suits at 41 Round Lake Road, Site Plan and Special Use Permit, Ground Mounted Solar.
Okay, Leah springs that again. Here, we've got another small-scale residential ground-mounted solar array broken into two arrays consisting of 56 350 watt solar panels, 19.6 kW DC, 15.2 kW AC. We've proposed a line of forsythias as screening, and topographically, this, the arrays sit lower than the proposed screening, and the proposed screening will actually be at the height adequate to conceal the arrays at the time of planting, and then they're going to mature from there and provide additional coverage. So that's all I got.
Who did the site visit for this one?
Delise and Kathy.
Having heard nothing from them in the negative, we will assume it was good. We saw the CAB's written report, and they found no issues with this particular application. Are there any questions from members of the planning board?
None.
Would I hear a motion, oh, any questions from members of the public? Anyone here from the public would like to comment or question about this application?
Not seeing anything, Michael.
Okay, thank you. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Edna.
Second?
Second, Sharon.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
I have a resolution strangely similar to the previous one. The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Adam Suits for Site Plan Special Use Permit under Town Code Chapter 125 for installation of a ground-mounted solar array at 41 Round Lake Road in the RC5 zoning district. We reaffirm the proposed action as type 2 under seeker, and based upon the review submitted by, submitted information including reports from planning board members and the CAB on their site visit to the project property, finds that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of Chapter 125. And with respect to the application of special use permit to authorize work, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits, and we grant the requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approval by the planning board. With respect to the application for site plan approval, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code Chapter 125, and approve the application inclusive of the application materials and plans by Sun Common dated July 14, 2020. We authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant satisfaction of the below conditions and/or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified within Town Code Chapter 125, payment of any outstanding fees and/or reimbursable amounts due to Town of Reinbeck related to the review and processing of applications subject to this resolution, and receipt of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein or from any other town, county, state, or other agency as required to undertake the proposed action. Could I hear a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Sharon. Second, please.
Second, Edna.
Thank you, Edna. Any further discussion? I will poll the board. Melody?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. Moving right along.
Thank you, good night.
You're very welcome. Our next public hearing is Bernard Scholder at 132 Reincliffe Road. Site Plan Review, Interior and Exterior Improvements and Shed Dormers.
Okay, everybody. Krista Hines, Bernard Scholder's sister, representing him this evening. We're proposing to renovate 132 Reincliffe Road, interior and exterior renovations. Really significant changes, we're adding two shed dormers to the roof, but no other significant changes to this footprint. We did have a site visit this week, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. The site visit was Sharon and myself. Sharon, if you'd like to speak up?
It's pretty, pretty simple. We'll put two dormers on the roof and not really, that's the only change, exterior change to the property, other than, you know, than the new siding and just boosting up the place, but the only change is the dormers. It's not raising the total height of the house or anything, it's just, just two dormers, so I have no problem with it.
I agree with Sharon. I think that it works to make the place a little more livable, a little more space upstairs, certainly. The improvements that are already taking place there, I think it's going to really make the house look really quite, quite nice right there along Reincliffe Road. I saw no issues with this whatsoever. Any questions from members of the planning board for the applicant?
I don't have any questions. I would just like to comment that opening up the porch and returning some of the original structure is really an asset, and I think, you know, it's just going to be a much nicer property, much nicer driving by there. So I compliment them on their efforts.
I couldn't agree more. Any other comments or questions from members of the planning board? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Very good. Thank you, Jim. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Second, Edna.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Very good. All righty, here we go. The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Bernard Scholder, Krista Hines, for Site Plan Approval under Town Code Chapter 125 for Interior and Exterior Renovations at 132 Reincliffe Road within the RM1 Residential Medium Density Zoning District. We reaffirm the proposed action as type 2 under seeker, based upon review of submitted information, including reports from planning board members, HAC, and CAB members on their site visits to the project property, find that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of Chapter 125. Under respect to the application for site plan approval, we find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code Chapter 125, and we approve the application inclusive of the application materials and plans by Dutton Architecture, PLLC, submitted August 12, 2020. And we authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant satisfaction of below conditions and/or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. One submission of the above cited site plan in the form and number specified within Town Code Chapter 125, except as maybe modified to a lesser number by the chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements. Payment of any outstanding fees and/or reimbursable amounts due to the Town of Reinbeck related to the review and processing of this application, and receipt of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein or from any other town, county, state, or other agency as required to undertake the proposed actions. Could I hear a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Melody.
A second from Sharon? Thank you. I will poll the board. Edna?
Well, yes.
Sharon?
Yeah.
Melody?
Yes.
And I vote yes. As soon as I have the final site plan that I can stamp and sign, you can get the building permit and you can raise the roof.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Good luck.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay. Our final public hearing for tonight is Nikal Mattel, 12468 Corporation, Site Plan Review, Pool, Pool House, and Garage. And we have an applicant representative, the applicant here.
Yes, Kyle Diamond is here, Andy Didio, the engineer, as well as Melissa Baker, the architect, and Dale Schaefer, the landscape architect. And then Nick is also on this call, the owner, as well.
Okay, if you would like to explain to the public what you, what you want to do here?
So I'll, I'll lead off. So in essence, we have the proposed garage, which is before, currently before the ZBA. Then, as shown in this map here, we have a proposed pool area, pool, as well as proposed pool house with an attached pergola. Obviously, there's going to be some improvement to the driveway, the proposed chip and seal area, and then we have plantings around the house. So that is the primary component of, of this, this, this project.
Would anyone on your group like to add to that?
Sure. This is Andy Didio with Ticonic Engineering. I'm not sure if I've got the ability to share a screen. I have a PDF up of a couple of modifications, or I guess revisions to the plan that just include some of the additional information that it sounded like was discussed at the site meeting on Friday, including grading and the existing septic system. So I don't know if that's feasible for me to pull up.
Generally, I think these things have to be in Jim's hands so we can get them processed so we can, so we can put them up during the meeting. I take it he hasn't received these yet?
No, the, sounded like the meeting was on Friday, so we got, we got notice of some of the comments this morning, so the revisions were made this afternoon. So I, if whoever the admin is controlling, they can allow the participants to screen share. I've got the PDF up. I mean, it's up to the board. I've, I've got the information if you want to see it.
So, so generally, we've got a policy at the town that all the information has to be submitted in advance, just because we have to control what's shown on the screen.
Okay.
And then we've kind of kept to that. It is there. It's kind of been standard policy, but, you know, I'll leave it up to Michael, you know, if you want to change that, but that's how we've been handling it, just, just because of the nature of what we're doing, and how we're doing it.
Well, Michael, this, this is going to be continued, so we will have to look at it.
That's right, and to study it.
Yeah.
Perhaps you could discuss with us or describe to us what the changes have been or the modifications have been?
Sure. It sounded like there was a discussion on Friday about a few things to be added to the plans, one of which was some grading, which because of the flatness of the site, there's not a ton of grading, but we do, we do show some kind of leveling, if you will, of the area around the parking court, as well as just some contours around the, around the north side that show that actually we're pulling grade away from the house a little bit to allow for door thresholds and everything. The, around the backside of the pool, and the pool house has some minor grading, but that's all shown. The, there was a discussion about locating trees for, that are to be removed for the pool and garage construction. So we do show a proposed tree line currently. The actual stem count, we don't have. We're actually intended to go out to the field tomorrow to collect that data. I guess one question I would have is what, what the board would consider a, consider a tree? Are we shooting everything from four-inch DBH, six-inch DBH? What should we be targeting there, based on the comment in the field?
In some cases, it depends on the species of the tree. If we're talking hardwood, you know, probably, well, it's, it's, actually, it's difficult to tell. Certainly, trees such as a lanthus and things like that, we would not at all object to being removed, things of that sort, any damaged or diseased trees. But I think it would have to be probably at four inches breast height, probably at this point, which would be trees considered to save, assuming they're in good health, and they're not of invasive species, and they're not damaged or something of that sort.
Well, and obviously, based on the placement of the pool house and the, and the garage, some, some trees are going to have to go in order to facilitate the construction, but yeah, obviously, we're minimizing as best we can, so we're going to shoot the trees with a, with a fairly wide berth around both the garage, the pool house, and along the back of the house due to some of the patio. As you see, patio kind of comes to the, to the tree line there, so there'll be a little bit of easing there. One of the other comments that came into play was the existing septic system. So I don't know if it was last week or two weeks ago, we were out on site, did a septic evaluation, excavated the existing septic tank, and used a camera scope to trace to the distribution box, uncovered that, and then traced all of the laterals. So we do have that indicated on the plan. So we also have a septic tank and a pump chamber associated with the pool house that we're still reviewing whether or not we could potentially go gravity from the, from the pool house over to a combined, combined septic tank, but most likely, it's going to be a pump chamber. If, but all of that, it sounded as though also that the building department's going to look for feedback from the Department of Health, so we'll be coordinating with, with Dave Pearson on the revision, even though there's no increase in loading, because we're not adding any bedrooms here, that they will seek. Most likely, this board and the, and the building department will seek the DOH's approval, so we'll coordinate with Dave on that, and would expect that to be an approval contingency if we, if we move forward. The existing condition plan, which is the zoomed-out page of the drawing, C101, that now shows the, the creek to the right, to the east side, the Landsman Kill. It's off the property, but we, we do show an outline of that. We traced it with an aerial, so it shows that, that, based on one of the comments, as well as there are two wooden platforms, historically constructed platforms down toward the, toward the toe of the slope in the back of the property. Those have also been indicated. There's a former road that runs along the northern property boundary, that runs along the toll of slope there, that has been indicated on the existing condition plan and the proposed condition plan, but it's identified in total on the existing condition plan. Trees to be removed. Pool house connection, septic. Yep, that, I think that's, that was the gist of plan revisions that were requested.
Okay. I, I had a discussion with Dave Pearson today, and he had a number of questions. He'd like to come out and actually see the site and see exactly what's going on and where, where whatever's going on is going on. The house was built in 1969 as a four-bedroom house. At that time, the health department was not all that involved in residential structure, so they have no records whatsoever of what the septic system consists of, size of tank, laterals, any things like that. How many laterals are there and what is their length?
There are three, there's actually very, the, there are three laterals on the system, I think one of which is 50 feet long, and the other two are 40 feet long when we scoped. So it looked, ultimately, we got to, to a point where it was just gravel for the, for the trench on, on all three, and used a, the camera scope has a tracer wand, a transmitter, so we were able to trace it below grade and, and pin those locations, and then we, we shot those with our robotic total station.
And where, where, if it exists, is a, is a reserve field for the system?
Well, typically, it's adjacent to, adjacent to the primary.
Is that where it is in terms of this project?
Yeah, that's where we would identify it. Yep, yep. Again, because there's not a whole lot of, there's not a whole lot of options, but we do have sufficient space in the back. Again, on the new plan, we show the, we show the lateral dispersion and then the proposed replacement area. So again, that'll all be coordinated with DOH.
Okay. I was, when I was looking at it early, today, I did see the ZBA plans that they had, which did actually show the existing septic system area. It seemed that the only area where a reserve field could be put on this property, you know, given the, well, as you can see, the grading and whatnot, would be up towards the, where the basketball court and the garage are proposed to be placed.
Well, and that, that existing septic area was just reputed from the owner, so we wanted to identify, you know, approximately where it was. The, the, the most recent plan that I have in front of me shows the actual laterals, and it's oriented, if you, the way that you see it on the plan from the ZBA, it's oriented primarily north and south.
Yes.
The laterals actually run east, almost due east and west, so the reserve area would be to the north.
Okay. Well, they does want to do a site visit, and so we'll try to coordinate that with you, because he wants to come out and take a look and see exactly what, what, what you're proposing to do and why you're proposing to do it.
Yeah.
There's certainly some concern at the health department that it's a 50-year-old system built under standards considerably different 50 years ago than today. And you're proposing to put in another bathroom, so there will be further flows into this system, so they want to make sure the system is capable of dealing with this.
Yep. I'd caution you to say there's additional flow. There, the, the loading for a system is based on bedrooms.
I know it's based on bedroom, but conditional flow means in the real world, someone goes in and flushes a toilet, that is additional flow. If someone's using the sink, things of that sort, it's an additional flow, and that's basically what they want to make sure, that this system is up to that standard. I think we both agreed that the standards 50 years ago for a four-bedroom house are significantly different than they are today for a four-bedroom house.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
This is something to discuss with Dave. He's the professional engineer with the health department. He's the one who will go over this, and he's the one who will advise us on what, if anything, needs to be done in terms of correction. We did do the site visit out there, Melody and Sharon and I, on Friday, and I guess that's the meeting that you thought was supposed to be this meeting. Anyway, we did go out there, and we did come up with a couple of problems, which we spoke with Kyle about. The first was that the geothermal wells are already put in the ground, even though the site plan has never been approved, and it was also done without building permits, which is not a good thing to have done. You'll be hearing from and seeing the building inspector tomorrow. He's coming out to take a look. There seemed to be a number of outside work done. I know that there was demolition on a deck. There appears to be work on an overhang coming off one side of the house that's being done, but in checking with the building department, the only building permit that was applied for was for the garage and for interior work, not exterior work. So that's another issue that's going to have to be resolved. And the fact that work was done outside without a building permit and without planning board approval are violations under the zoning law as well. So these are a number of things you're going to have to deal with, with the building inspector and the zoning enforcement officer to get cleared up, so that we can proceed with this application. I don't think that's a surprise to you. I think Mr. Diamond was aware of that after our discussions with him on Friday, that these things have to be cleared up before we can proceed. I don't know if anything else at this point that I have to add to this. I don't know if Sharon or Melody have anything else to add that I've missed.
No, I don't think so. I think you've covered everything that we talked about in the field.
Okay. We will try to.
Is the basketball, oh, is the basketball court still on the plan?
Yes. Yep, that, that hasn't.
Another thing that we'd like to see is a approximation, if you can give it to us, of the fill required to prepare a, a site to build the garage where it's proposed to be placed as. It goes right up against that rather significant drop off down to that other roadway down there, which is actually an abandoned county road, a town road, I should say. But there is an easement on that road from it, on this property and the neighboring property across from there to allow people to access the Landsman Kill by using that. Although it is not a town road any longer. And I don't believe it is really approved for vehicular access. I know there have been some legal issues. I think the previous owner of this house had some issues with the, a person who was using it for truck traffic and things like that. I don't know how that was resolved. I don't know that we were ever informed what the legal outcome of that was. But that's pretty much what I have. Is there any other questions from members of the planning board? Or from Jim?
The, with respect to the, to the garage fill, we actually aren't, aren't planning on, on a lot of fill around the backside of the garage because of the steepness of the slope. It's very difficult to catch up. So the, essentially on the back corner, that north corner of the garage will have just a taller foundation there. So it's, it drops off about four feet from front to back, from finished floor elevation to the back. So it'll just have a deeper foundation for frost protection.
Okay. These are, these are the sort of details that we will require for the application to be complete for us to go through, to go over. Because obviously when we looked at it and saw where it was flagged, we saw there was a very steep decline and a number of the trees which are securing that area right now obviously have to be removed to put the garage there. So there is a question.
So when you say details, do you mean like building elevations?
Yes. Building elevations. Yes.
You got it. Okay.
We were working off what was flagged in the, in terms of what we were visually seeing.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. Jim, if there are people, the, the public who would like to comment, ask questions, if you can coordinate that since you'll know who's there and who isn't.
So if anyone has any comments, they can let me know in the chat box or you can turn Don't actually believe we have anyone. Here for that. I think we're good, Michael. If you have any comments.
Well, we need to continue this public hearing. I'd like to hear from the planning board what you think would be appropriate. I know our next meeting is pretty well booked up. We could go to November, we could go to our December meeting.
Is there a way to leave it, to continue it to an undetermined date until we've got all the information back?
Do we have a complete application?
Yeah.
That's probably the best at this point. I'm not sure what's going to happen about remediating the building permit and the zoning violations. And that's be up to the building inspector and the zoning enforcement officer and I.
Right. And you haven't, and you haven't been in the field with Dave Pearson either.
No, we have, we need to do that as well.
Will we continue it to December? Otherwise noticing has to be done again if we do an undetermined time.
All right. So the first one in December would be what date?
December 7th at 6:35.
Well, that seems reasonable to me.
Okay. Could I, a motion to continue the public hearing to December 7th at 6:35, please?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, Edna.
Very good. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Very good. All right. December 7th.
Just to clarify, I just want to make sure that, given the fact that we need some additional information to make the complete application, building elevations for the, for the backside of the garage so that you can see that, that foundation, meet with the department of health and get some feedback from Dave Pearson and then any of the zoning items.
We'll also need elevations, you know, of the house, how it's going to, you look, you're doing exterior changes. We need the elevations of what the house is going to look like, the pool house, how the pool is going to be, you know, what sort of fencing, security fencing will be around the pool. It's a, basically a very detailed description of what's going to go on. So we know what we're approving.
Yeah. And I believe you do have some renderings and elevations from the architect in the initial submission, but I'll, I'll double check and make sure that you've got, you've got those.
The most current ones would be good.
Yep. I don't think they've changed, but yeah. Okay. Great.
And I've just mentioned one other question that came up in talking with Dave. The, the four wells for the geothermal are certainly well within the well field area for the potable water well. So I'm assuming, well, I shouldn't assume anything. Is this a closed system? The geothermal system?
Yes, it is.
Are there any chemicals used anti, you know, antifreeze type things, anything like that? And is it just pure water?
To my knowledge, it's pure, pure water, but I can certainly confirm that with the geothermal company.
That was just something Dave said might be of concern, but isn't necessarily, but could be, just given the proximity of those four wells to the drinking water for the property. Okay then. Well, I think we're good until December 7th at 6:35.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Take care.
Okay. Our next item, Erin Mulligan, 402 Supasco Center Road, site plan and special use permit for a privacy fence.
Hi, how are you tonight?
Very good. How are you?
Very good, thanks. So we're, oh. Start my video. Did I start it? I don't know. Oh, there we go. We are putting up a privacy fence around our backyard. I believe we had a site visit in the past couple of weeks after the last meeting and we had the fence area staked out. And it's really for privacy and security. You can see right into the back of our house. So just so that people aren't looking right into our house at night when it's lit up inside.
Okay. Have you given any thought to the one, the one face, the long stretch of fence along, is it, is it Supasco? Which, the long one gone?
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you very much. About on the outside of that, doing some planting, some forsythia, something like that, just to break it up?
Yes. We, we're going to put some plants on the outside of the fence out there. We actually had some plans with that already.
Okay. That, because I think that would be very helpful because it's, it's a fairly long expanse. And I think that sort of thing would tend to, you know, modify that and soften it up a little bit. We'll be doing a site visit, come out and you can show us the plan you have then for what plantings you'd like.
Oh, we don't have set plans. We were just chatting about it, like, you know, and discussing what we wanted to do in the future.
Okay.
Well, actually, you know, if you're going to do that, it would be helpful going forward to have that detailed on your application.
Okay. Well, we have, we're pressing one bridge at a time. We'll get the fence up, but you know, eventually hopefully we'll then save up again to have a landscaper come in.
Well, they might need to be joined together.
Oh, that, I, I'm, I'll let you know what kind of bushes I'm going to plant.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm having trouble understanding you.
We, I was just saying, we were discussing that we were thinking that we'd plant bushes out there. We have no set plan. So it's nothing I would add on to that.
Okay. I, I think you'll find that the plan, well, it depends a great deal on what the ZBA has to say and what the neighbors, because you're in so close proximity to all your neighbors in that area. And that's a very visible area, obviously for the people that breaking it up, a privacy fence, I understand why you want to have it. But I also think that if you were to have plants and plantings in along there, doesn't that be all planted by any means? But just enough to break up just that big white, you know, ongoing surface. I think that would make a huge difference. Just things like, nothing fancy necessarily, forsythia, things like that, which tend to grow quickly and tend to be easy to care for and tend to cover up very quickly, would probably make a huge difference. And I think that that would be, make it much easier for the planning board also to feel comfortable with this type of fence. Because generally in the town of Rhinebeck and in the hamlet of Rhine Cliff, we don't approve privacy fences you can't see through.
Right.
Okay. Questions by other members of the planning board?
Oh, well, Michael, what did you mean by that? Is this a privacy fence that you cannot see through? And so is that an issue?
It is. That's why it's a special use permit use.
I see.
Because you can't see through it. It's the same sort of situation there with Henry Stout, how he wanted to extend that privacy fence on his property down Tater Hill Road.
Right.
And it's a solid wood fence. It's sort of like a stockade fence that you can't see through.
So what I just put up on this, what I just put up on the screen, I think is a, kind of a simple rendering of what they're proposing to do. Is that right, Erin?
Yeah.
Is the plan to have it white?
Yeah.
Rather than a natural wood?
Yeah. Cause, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's similar material to the fence between Village Pizza and Rhinebeck Savings Bank. Or maybe it's Rhinebeck Bank. No, I don't think it's a savings bank anymore. It goes in that little alleyway behind Al's, Al Stickles and Village Pizza and Huck Hill's place and then the bank on the other. I think it's similar to that in terms of material.
But it, you cannot see through it.
Correct. And that's why it's a special permit use.
And Michael, are you suggesting that for the public hearing, we would like to see the actual planting plan?
Yeah, I think that's something that we need to have generally in a site plan.
And that would name what plants exactly and some idea of how many and where they're going to be?
Yeah. It would, or a variety of plants. It doesn't have to necessarily be one specific plant.
Hi, this is Jeff Mulligan. How are you?
Very good.
This is a bit of a challenge, you know. This lot presents a lot of challenges. And this is a unique corner lot with a lot of visibility. The fence that we chose is high quality, nice looking. I'm really struggling with having to commit to plantings on the outside in addition to the cost of the fence. And we just put the house up and have a lot of money invested into this house. And I'm really struggling to understand why we need to commit to plantings now on top of everything else. It just seems a bit excessive.
Typically, as, as I was saying, privacy fences of this sort are not approved in the town and for reasons that, because of aesthetic reasons primarily. I understand why you want to have it. And I think the only part that I really see needing the plantings is along the side that's long, Supasco Beach Drive, which is the only thing that other people are really ever going to see. I think as part of a project such as this, it does tend to soften it. It makes it look a little better. Right now, it tends to look somewhat institutional just to have a big white fence with nothing else in there running down like that. And I think that it would look much nicer for the neighborhood if there was just some greenery outside there to soften that up.
Michael, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Assuming that they are able to come back at the public hearing with a plan for what would be planted and how many and some idea of where, the planting itself could occur when, would you say, would be adequate? In other words, it's not a good time to plant things right now?
You wouldn't want to do it now anyway. No, it would have to be during plant, you know, either in the spring or during the growing season. Certainly not at this time of year or any time immediately following any approval that might be received and the plant, and the fence goes up. The fence will definitely be built before any planting would be done.
Like, like May of next year or something like that?
That would probably be appropriate. You can probably get decent material at that time and it's a, probably a healthy time to put things in the ground.
I guess my question is, if I commit to say, yes, I'll put forsythia in, and then in May, when I'm ready to put it in, I decide, I don't know, I would rather lilac bushes. Am I committed to a specific plant right now? Cause I'm just, you know?
What you would do is you would, you would just ask me, could that just be a field change? And if you were going from forsythia to lilac, I would say certainly.
Okay.
You would not have to come back before the planning board. No.
Okay.
Do you have to pay any more additional fees?
Nope. I'm, I'm a volunteer. They don't pay me anything.
I hear you. I understand. I mean, but we're really, we're really jumping through a lot of financial groups for this. And it's, it's getting a bit burdensome that, you know, unreal. Like this is, this is not a typical lot in Rhinebeck. There's probably very few lots like this in Rhinebeck. And we're really, really focused in on security and privacy. And I, I just really, again, I'm struggling hard and I'm trying to remain patient and understanding, but we're trying to do really nice things and make this piece of property what's really, really nice. And it's just a struggle.
Well, I can understand that. I understand.
I think the thing that we're, we're struggling with is, is the character of the community. And this area in Supasco Lake is a very wonderful part of Rhinebeck. It's a small community unto itself with lots of lovely little homes. And we don't want it to appear as if it's starting to get walled off one from another. So some of this relates to the community character. And by just adding some plant material, it makes the whole stretch of that fence more welcoming. I mean, it, you're going beyond the norm, which is to ask for something that we can't see through. And so the sort of help us out here is we'll give us some plants that break it up. So it looks more natural and more like it belongs there.
I believe it's also a six foot fence, is it not?
It is.
And four feet is what's allowed along the, the road, public roads is a four foot fence. And so there's both things are things that ordinarily are not approved in the town. If you go through Supasco Village, I don't think you'll find another house, another lot in there that is just have a fence like this with nothing else around it, no trees, no greenery, no nothing. At least I've never seen it in there. And I've lived here for 45 years. So to remain within character of this community, which I know that people care a great deal about, adding some plantings, allowing you to do this, which is not normally permitted in the town of Rhinebeck, but allowing you to do it. I understand what your concerns are. What we're asking for, and we can exchange for that, is to just to soften it up somewhat with greenery, which over time will grow in and will take care of any sort of harsh look that sets this thing apart from anything else in that whole community. There are no trees there. There's no nothing there, just a big white fence.
We understand that. You guys have to understand.
That community.
You have to understand, we just built this house. This was just completed. And we spent a lot of money doing it. And we have a lot of money into other projects. My fear is that I'm not going to be able to meet a timeframe of May or April or whenever it is in order to get this done. And I don't want to run afoul of the town.
No, I understand that. If there, if you run into a problem like that, just come and talk to me about it. I can understand a situation like that and we can just work out a different time schedule. We have no interest whatsoever in nailing you to the wall because you don't meet a specific time schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or anything before I have a procedural permit so we can have resolutions, we can move along with this application? Hearing none? Okay. Let me. Let me find the resolution. Okay. Got it. Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board, hereby access follows on the application by Erin Mulligan for special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 and site plan approval for a fence at 402 Supasco Center Street within the NIO Neighborhood Infill Overlay District, zoning district. We accept the application and supporting documents as adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors and public. We classified as type two under secret for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. We're scheduling a public hearing on the application for?
November 16th at 6:35.
Okay. November 16th at 6:30. Thank you, Gretchen. And we direct the clerk to undertake or otherwise cause noticing, posting their own in accordance with the requirements set forth in Town Code Chapter 125. For delegate planning board members, who would like to do a site visit to Supasco Village? Okay. And they put it another way. Who would like to go with me to do a site visit to Supasco Village?
I'll go, Michael.
Okay. Thank you, Edna. To conduct a field visit of the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing, in accordance with the Town Code Chapter 9, Conservation Advisor Board, refer the application to the CAB for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. And we authorize without prejudice when information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral preparation of a working draft of an approvals resolution with the planning board's consideration on October 19th.
November 16th on that one.
November 16th. November 16th or as maybe later timely. Thank you, Gretchen. Quite all right. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So both.
Edna.
And a second?
Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Very good. I shall be getting in touch with you to set up the site visit. I shall be getting in touch with you to set up the site visit. Would you, you know, do before the, before the public hearing? And if all goes well at the public hearing, then we can close the public hearing and we can give you a resolution of approval for this, so you can get a building permit.
Great. One question. Is there anything special that we need to do for that site visit in advance?
Oh, I think the pictures you have are plenty, and just show us where it's going to go. But you might like, just take some wooden stakes, put them in the corners of where it's going to go, if you know what I mean?
Yeah, I staked it out for the zoning board, and the stakes are still there. Just leave them in place.
That's perfect.
Okay.
I don't think anything else. I think the pictures you provided are adequate as well.
Okay.
So we'll see you sometime soon.
Very well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, we have. We have two time extension requests, one from Henry Stout. I believe this is for his village town property, the, the thing we first approved with him?
Yes.
Yes.
And yeah, there he is. Okay. He's requesting a an extension on his approvals for, for six calendar months from the dates the plans are stamped with the planning board chair. January 8th?
That should be 2021. I'm sorry.
Okay, 2021, January.
And he might, not, I'm not ready for it to be 2021 yet.
Okay. Okay. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
And Edna.
Any questions about this one? All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Very good. Then we have one for Grassmere. This is an extension for the reissue that we did just a little while ago. And I just, I guess I'd like to say at this point, I don't know that I'm going to feel at all inclined to reissue another approval for the old Phase 1 Monet, whatever it was, that this is an extension of. I kind of think that we've been issued an extension to the point where I don't think that, I think after a while, you, you just have to stop. So anyway.
Are you saying, are you saying that you are not in favor of it as it's written now?
No, no, I'm fully in favor of this extension.
Okay.
And allowing, allowing the extension that, that they're asking for, for that reissue. But when this extension runs out and this thing is about to go belly up, I don't think we should just, you know, procedurally go through and just reissue this approval again, which we reissued, I think, almost, what, six, five, six, seven years ago, whenever it was?
So do you want the resolution to indicate something along those lines? Or is that not appropriate?
Why don't we leave that out so we can, you know, discuss this with the applicant? I, I know Jim has been in some contact with Jonathan and John Montaigne, and there seems to be some movement towards coming up with answers to our questions and comments, I think.
Jonathan, Jonathan and Victoria are online if, if they want to open up their mics. I think they were just going to listen into the extension request discussion. But I think the best thing to do is to do this extension. It's, it's been documented now in the comments in, in, you know, this video that'll be online. And Gretchen can certainly document it in the meeting notes as well, what was just discussed. I think we should probably keep this resolution clean.
As clean as, but I agree.
Okay.
Did they wish to say anything, Jim?
I'm sorry. I was going to say Jonathan and Victoria are on the, they're listening in and know the conversation that's going on as well.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I just unmuted. Yeah, no, I, I heard, I heard the comments.
Could I hear a motion to approve the extension?
So moved, Melody.
Was Sharon the second or Edna?
Edna.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good. Okay, so that is done.
Is it? Okay, never mind. I saw the, never mind. I caught myself.
Okay. And I think that we had a, the referral for Matal. I think we did one back about two months ago, at which time we said we didn't recognize any planning issues, things of that sort. Since we've done the site visit and that's after tonight's discussion, as you, as you now know, we found very significant issues, I think, that need to be addressed. And therefore, I think I would like to send a revised recommendation to the zoning board of appeals that they, first of all, definitely do a site visit out to that site. That there are potential planning issues that we've identified. We obviously don't have the full details on them. We don't have the full details from the applicant yet. But that a site visit is essential. And at the same time, I think that we can also share with them our comments on our site visit, what we saw, what we found, and the different issues that are now have to be addressed and remediated really before this application, this project can go forward. I don't know exactly, oh, I see Jim's working it on right now.
Well, Michael.
Yes.
Recommend that the ZBA do a site visit, which I think is very strongly warranted.
It's critical.
It's very critical to the understanding of the property. You have to be on the property to see what's going on. But we will be working to set up a, a visit, a return visit with Dave Pearson. And we might suggest to the ZBA that someone from their board accompany us on the same, on the same visit.
I, I think that's a good idea.
I mean, I, I think this stands on itself fine here, but, you know, we can alert them the fact that when we're going to be there, and if they want to send someone at that time, I think it would be very beneficial.
I'll talk to Christine, or I'll call Scott and let them know when we finally set this up, since we seem to have a lot of players who are going to be taking part in the site visit, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And it's fair to say that the work that's already been done without any permits definitely requires the zoning board of appeals to get out there and really understand what's happening.
And, and Ed Matic, our building inspector, will be going out there tomorrow. And I think that Michelle is doing training today and tomorrow, so she may not be able to get out there till Wednesday. Okay.
So can we send a new, we'll send a new response back to the ZBA? And if so, what I, has somebody done here and highlight, kind of done what we think we wanted to do?
I, I think that's it.
So it's such a saying?
To say that. I think, I like what you have, finds that the requested variance raise planning and environmental concerns. And they, and it does. I think the garage, the way he was describing it, where they had it flagged, it was over that precipice. And they were very vague in discussing how they were going to deal with it.
Well, I also think the thing is that the lack of sufficient engineering information has left us in a position of not really understanding what's being proposed on the property.
I think we may also, once we finally get a final version, possibly even the version he says we have, he has now that he just brought today, share this with Ray Drakowski to take a look at. I'm wondering, because of the nature of the land and where it is, if a stormwater pollution prevention plan may not be necessary for this. I, it's just, I mean, I don't know, but.
One thing we did hear tonight that, you know, Andy Diddio has now identified other areas where grading is going to be required that we didn't know anything about before.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to be a stickler for not putting things up on the screen, but we made it a pretty solid, you know, requirement. We have to have things in advance, both to be fair to the planning board members, not to see things cold at a meeting, but also to make sure that the information that's getting put out here publicly and recorded is information that's been vetted so that we know what's in there. Not that I expect we're going to have any issues, but in terms of general policy, I think it's a, it's a good policy to follow. So it seems a little silly, but I think it's important.
I don't think it's silly at all. I think first of all, it hopefully disciplines people into coming up with the correct information in a timely manner. I mean, this stuff's been dribbling and grabbing in since, and it's still dribbling and grabbing in. And I'm sure what he brought in tonight on the PDF probably is going to be different by tomorrow morning, so. Okay. Everyone read, read the.
I was just going to say, so if what I've written is.
I was just going to say, can everyone read this?
Yeah, if it's generally okay, then, you know, I can, I can tweak it, you know, a little bit with you, Michael, to be final. But anyway, everyone's generally in agreement with this, we can kind of run with it.
Things good.
Okay. Could I hear a motion to approve, please?
All moved.
Second?
Second, Melody.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we had one other referral from the ZBA, and that was for the Mulligan fence. I think they need two variances for that.
Let me pull that one up for you.
And I think one of the variances is to go to six feet rather than four. And I thought there may have been another one.
Oh, the transparency of the fence?
Well, that's the special permit.
Oh, okay.
To do that.
Oh, okay.
So here's the, the referral. It's within 50 feet of the front lot line and then the six-foot height. It's the second. So I, I put the other resolution, you know, either finding that there are no issues or if there's something else you wanted the planning board would like to do, we can write that up as we go.
Is there some way that we can ask the zoning board of appeals to take into consideration community character?
Well, they're definitely supposed to do that. That's.
But can we flag that?
Well, it does say in the normal thing that you recommend and the input of neighboring property owners. I think what I would do is I would say that we find the requested variance raises potential planning planning, planning issues. And would it be appropriate?
Am I the only one, am I the only one that feels that way?
No, we can, well, you see down below, it says, you know, when they make their decision, including consideration of input of neighboring property owners. But we can make that more specific. Would we also like to add in that we feel it's a recommendation we'd like to make to them for the variance that plantings outside the fence, on the, on the street side of the fence, be included in any as part of a variance approval? Or you think that's going too far?
Well, my personal opinion is that they're asking for things outside what we would normally approve within the town, and we're asking them to mitigate the impact of those changes, the height and the lack of transparency by adding some landscaping. I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
I don't either. And I think perhaps we should actually, you know, write that out in this, saying that in, in granting their request for a privacy fence which, which exceeds standard dimensions for fences, we feel that to mitigate the.
Michael, what do you think about suggesting that the ZBA require that the applicant meet the planning board's requirements for plantings?
I think I like that very much.
Go on in two different places, you know, you want.
I like that very much.
I'm sorry?
He likes it.
I like it.
Okay.
I like it very much.
Do they require planning board's requests? Is that what you said, Edna?
That the applicant meet the planning board's request or requirements for plantings?
I would make it requirement.
Requirement, you said, Melody?
Yeah, instead of request.
Okay.
I like it.
We haven't defined that requirement yet, so there's still plenty of opportunity to discuss and negotiate.
Exactly.
It might be, but I, I'm hearing us all feel that plantings are an important element in this application.
I agree. And I think what the ZBA is doing, they're just granting variances, but they're not approving the actual site plan. That's what we do, and that's where the plantings would, would come in. But they can certainly premise the approval of the variances on the requirement that the, the planting, a planning plan agreed upon between the applicant and the planning board be carried out. Yeah, I like that.
Good.
Okay, could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Edna. Second.
Sharon.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Very good. Um, that's all I got.